It would take me ten years, it would take me fifteen years if I grew at ten percent to grow, to get to.
Yeah, everybody ready?
You have to get licensed.
Are we ready, guys?
I think so.
Okay, we're on the air.
Do you want to start it?
Okay.
It's your meeting, isn't it, Kevin?
It's your, yeah, it's your meeting.
It's your meeting.
You want to start it?
Yeah.
We'll do the pledge.
Okay, let's start. This is the January sixth, 2020 meeting, regular meeting number one. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Phillips?
Here.
Kreitzer?
Present.
Graham Murray?
Here.
Mopin?
Here.
Rinker?
Here.
This is the time set to make nominations for the office of mayor for new to your term pursuant to city charter. Okay, just a reminder, you can only nominate once, but you can second any number of nominations. And then you can also make a brief statement in support of the nomination made or seconded. The council member nominated may not make a statement at this time.
I would like to make a nomination. I'd like to nominate John Phillips for mayor.
Second. Any other nominations? Any other nominations twice? Any other nominations third time? Then I need a not, then I need a motion that nominations be closed if there's no further nominations.
I move nominations for mayor be ceased, closed.
I need a second.
Second.
Who was the second?
I was.
Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Mopin?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay, we're still going to do a ballot, just in case. Write your name and then vote for one person. Well, it'll be up, it'd be obviously Phillips, but unless you want to do a write-in.
Yes, ma'am.
We should do that. Mm-hmm. He's watching at home, you know, he does love that.
Okay. Kreitzer voted for Phillips. Mopin voted for Phillips. John Phillips voted for Phillips. Matt Rinker voted for Phillips. And Linda Murray voted for Phillips.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone want to make statements now?
I, well, I'll make one. I'm, uh, I'm humbled, so, you know, I'm going to do my best to hopefully build consensus with, within the community, with the, the staff and with the council. And I know that unified, the five of us, even though we have different opinions on different things, will work toward the best, uh, best direction of the city. I know there's big shoes to fill, and I'm going to be honest with you, I don't think anybody can do it the way our past mayor did. So I'm going to be the type of mayor that relies on my colleagues, because each one of us has the same amount of authority. I just run the meetings. So I, hopefully, everybody can participate in the different events and, uh, and make sure the council, the city of Burlington is well represented. Uh, thank you, thank you very much. It's humbling.
In the time that I've served with John, I think he's done a, a good job, and I think he demonstrates a lot of compassion, and I think he's also been a cheerleader for everybody up here, and I think he'll do a good job and, and help Burlington continue to live, work, and play and move in the right direction, so I'm going to move this over to you. There you go.
Actually, I think we switched seats, don't we?
Yeah, you want to switch seats.
We can, okay.
And then I do need a motion for that election.
I move that the election of John Phillips, mayor of Burlington, the city of Burlington, Iowa, for a two-year term be hereby approved.
Second. Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Mopin?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
Hi, John. Dudley Phillips.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge all the duties of.
Discharge all the duties of.
The office of mayor.
The office of mayor.
In and for the city of Burlington, Iowa.
In and for the city of Burlington, Iowa.
As now and hereafter.
As now and hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. 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 Thank you. All right. Now do I, I do this? Okay, nominations for mayor pro tem?
I would like to nominate, uh, Mr. Rinker. Do I have a second?
Second. I can still, if I second, I can still nominate, though, correct? Okay, I would like to nominate Linda Graham Murray.
Second.
That was your second?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations going once? Going twice? Three times? Do you have a motion to close the nominations?
I move the nominations be closed.
Second.
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
I was.
Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Mopin?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Do you want anyone to do comments?
Oh, any, would anyone like to make a, candidates like to make a statement now, or any of the nominators?
I would just say that, uh, both Linda and I have served on the council for the last two years. Either one of us would be a great choice. Uh, we've both been active, both been voices, we've both traveled, so I think at the end of the day, you get a pretty good mayor pro tem.
I, um, had several people in the community ask me to run for mayor, and I, I prayed about it, and I thought about it, and would I want to be the second woman to mayor in Burlington? Hell, yes, but pray and hell in the same sentence. That's not too good, is it? But anyway, so I think I'm trying a mayor pro tem on for size. I think I could do a good job, and I'm really flattered for this nomination, and I think I would do a good job for Burlington.
I'll, I'll just make a quick statement. You know, it's, I'll be honest with you, this is an awkward process, because, uh, we have, I feel, a very talented, uh, council here, and it, it is tough, as we all work together well, we all, all, all do things together well. I nominated Linda, uh, because I, I've found her to be very thorough and very, uh, in fact, I call her notes when I have a question, she writes everything down. And so, it, but, the same token, you know, Matt or, or Robert or Bill, any of us would be a good choice, so, uh, I basically, uh, I was going with Linda because of where we placed in the elections and our experience level, so, but I think you, I think you would do a great job, and Matt, I think you would, too.
I would agree with everybody's statements. Uh, everybody that's up here I, I voted for, or my spouse voted for, or collectively, we made sure that you were here. Um, I'm honored to, to be sitting here with you, so I would be happy with either one of you. Um, I, I'm, I would have to flip the coin, to be honest. Uh, I'd be happy with either one of you.
Okay, shall we vote?
Okay, um, Matt Rinker voted for Rinker. Kreitzer voted for Rinker. Graham Murray voted for Graham Murray. Um, Mopin voted for Graham Murray, and Phillips voted for Graham Murray, so Graham Murray.
Perfect.
Motion that nominations for mayor pro tem be closed?
We've already done it.
Oh, sorry, my bad. To approve, uh, mayor pro tem for two-year term.
Second.
Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Mopin?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Did you want to say anything, Linda?
I'm just really tickled pink. No, I'm just really excited, and thank you for everyone that had confidence in me and voted for me, and I'll try not to let you down.
Congratulations.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Linda Graham Murray.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of.
Discharge all the duties of.
The office of mayor pro tem.
The office of mayor pro tem.
In and for the city of Burlington, Iowa.
In and for the city of Burlington, Iowa.
As now and hereafter.
As now and hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm just a little excited. I'm just a little excited.
Okay, um, statements by the new mayor and pro tem, did we just make those? Or do we want us to make the statements again?
I think I just made them.
Okay, good, that's done. Any statements from the council members? We did those. Next is consent agenda to the public. All matters listed under item one, consent agenda have been, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, then that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. And on the consent are: the normal finances of miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes permits, reports and bonds. Resolutions, number one is resolution reappointing city officers of the city of Burlington. Number two is a resolution approving final acceptance and final payment of, and release of retention monies for the 2018 Mason Road Shared Use Path Project. Number three is a resolution approving golf for injured veterans everywhere, the give program at Flint Hills Municipal Golf Course. Thanks for bringing that up, Matt. Four is a resolution of mending the planning option agreement for the former police department building at 424 North Third Street. And appointments are: construction board of appeals, Tim Brown; historic preservation commission, Steve Freevert; renewable energy committee, Jerry Parks; water work board trustees, Robert Masden; grow greater Burlington, the mayor, John Phillips; convention of visitors' bureau, Linda Graham Murray; downtown partners, Robert Kreitzer; emergency management commission is, uh, Phillips and Graham Murray; Des Moines County Solid Waste Commission, Linda Graham Murray; economic board chair, or economic boards, sorry, Matt Rinker; resource enhancement and protection committee, or R E P, R E A P committee, Bill Mopin; southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission, Matt Rinker, John Phillips is the alternate; renewable energy commission, Linda Graham Murray, and John Phillips is the alternate; southeast Iowa Homeless Coordinating Board, Bill Mopin; assessors count, assessors conference board, it would be Phillips and Graham Murray; Burlington Bees Association, Matt Rinker, with Graham Murray as alternate; steam old day citizen, senior citizen board, Phillips, COPO, or COCO, COPO?
COPO.
COPO, Bill Mopin; desk com control board, it'd be Phillips and Matt Rinker; greater Burlington Sports Commission, Bill Mopin and Matt Rinker; Burlington Riverfront Entertainment, Matt Rinker; and southeast Iowa Riverfront Commission, S I R R C, Matt Rinker. Is there anybody who wish to have any of these consent items removed from the audience? Anybody from the audience wish us to have the consent items removed? Anybody from, uh, council? Seeing none, can we get a motion?
Motion to approve, uh, all listed under item.
That was me, I guess.
Second.
I didn't know I could make a motion after reading all that.
Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Mopin?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Uh, next is ordinances.
Your honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning the property located at 313 North Roosevelt Avenue, Zone C2 General Commercial, to also include R4 multifamily residential in a planned unit development overlay zone as allowed by zoning code of the city of Burlington, Iowa.
Second. Mr. Tisler?
No changes from the previous, uh, reading. Uh, this again is a request, uh, by the owner of the property, the former Shopko, uh, building there, 313 North Roosevelt, to rezone, uh, to include an R4 multifamily district with a PUD overlay. Uh, this would allow the existing building, uh, existing shop, former Shopko building that's existing there to be used for multifamily residential. Uh, their intent, uh, was to develop some senior housing, um, condo or cooperative-type housing in that, within that building. Um, and then the remaining portion along Roosevelt Avenue would remain a C2 general commercial, um, for possible future development. Uh, they did submit a general concept plan, um, showing the, uh, existing building, um, here on the west side of the property to include apartments or condos along the outside of the property, some interior parking, and then what some future commercial development could look like. Uh, it's not planned at this time, but, uh, include a commercial strip center here on, uh, Roosevelt to the east of the development and a possible restaurant to the north of that. Um, there are some other provisions within the PUD, including, uh, landscaping, a buffer between the commercial and residential, shown here, uh, pedestrian access from the residential out to the corner market and Roosevelt, um, some architectural design guidelines, uh, did discuss the parking, uh, being reduced to one and a half spaces for those smaller units under, uh, eight hundred square feet, um, and then, uh, would follow all of the provisions of our zoning code. The planning commission did vote five to zero to recommend approval as well.
Any, uh, concerns or comments from the audience? Not seeing any, council? Now, Jim, is this one that we can go right ahead to the final reading?
Yeah, uh, did you?
Yeah, Matt should have it.
I should? Oh, I do. It's buried. Okay. I have, are we good to close?
No, I need to.
Motion to amend?
Yeah, and then read that a motion.
Motion to amend, uh, the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning to the property located at 313 North Roosevelt Avenue, Zone C2 General Commercial, to also include R4 multifamily residential and planned unit development overlay zone as allowed by zoning code of the city of Burlington, Iowa, to read as, for waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance rezoning the property located at 313 North Roosevelt Avenue, Zone C2 General Commercial, to also include R4 multi-residential and a planned unit development overlay zone as allowed by the zoning code of the city of Burlington, Iowa. Please don't make me read that twice.
Second.
Okay, this is on the motion to amend.
Okay.
Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Mopin?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
And then for final.
For the motion as amended?
Right.
Okay.
Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Mopin?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Uh, number two.
Your honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending the mayor and council compensation provisions of the city of Burlington, Iowa, code of ordinances.
Second.
One thing I'll just note, uh, as we go through here and people get used to the awkwardness of trying to figure out who's supposed to be making a motion in a second, a lot of places rely on really kind of who is kind of in favor of a motion or, or an action item to make the motion in a second. Uh, this, this community has been, it's the first community I've been in that where, uh, the clerk has sort of divvied up motions and seconds to get items introduced to the floor, so as people see, uh, who is making motions and seconds, it's not necessarily those who are pushing a given item or may even be in favor of it. It's to get it out there for discussion purposes and for the actual vote to occur later. So, uh, it's, uh, it is a learning curve for new council coming on, uh, to remember that, that these have been divvied up and, uh, to just sort of pay attention to where we are in the agenda and, and, and make the motions. It doesn't have to follow the way it's, it's been presented out there. It's just given it, given it out there so that, uh, there is some ease of having it move in an orderly fa- fashion through the, the agenda items. Um, this ordinance is, was brought up by, uh, former mayor, McCambe, as a discussion item a little over a month ago, a desire to see a change in the compensation for the positions of mayor and, and council. Uh, the only way to make a change is by ordinance. Uh, the nature of making a change to, uh, the compensation amounts, uh, if this were to pass after three readings, uh, does not go into effect until after the next general election, uh, for the, for the council that comes into office at the following January one, so it wouldn't be until two years from now that it would alter the, the pay for those, for these positions. Uh, currently, our, uh, compensation has been this way for a few decades anyway, is five hundred fifty a month for the position of mayor and five hundred a month for the position of council. Uh, the ordinance that you have before you would change those compensation amounts to nine thousand per year for council members, which is seven fifty, is that right? Seven fifty a month, and we did it on the, the yearly because of the way that you were wanting to see the, the difference in pay for the mayor position, the mayor being ten thousand per year, a thousand more. Um, but it also has a clause in here for changes moving forward after, uh, that original year. Uh, each fiscal year, it would automatically adjust based off of the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, for all urban consumers for the Midwest region as determined by the United States Department of Labor's Bureau of Labor Statistics, and that's calculated, the change in the CPI for the twelve-month period beginning eighteen months prior to the beginning of the new fiscal year, it'd be a January one, and ending six months prior to the beginning of the new fiscal year. However, the adjustment shall not exceed three percent, so it's capped at three percent. Um, and the reason for language such as this, you want, the, the discussions that were held were wanting to have a way to have that, uh, increase over time and rather than stay in a, in a stagnant position for several decades again, uh, the mayor, or the mayor, the council has to, at the same time, though, uh, be cognizant that they cannot vote themselves an automatic raise. Uh, the only way to have something that is put in place where you're not doing an automatic raise by, uh, your current vote is to have it based on some sou- outside, uh, indicator such as CPI for those, uh, ongoing changes. I hope I didn't confuse it too much with that, but.
I think you clarified it. Any, uh, concerns or comments from the audience? Comments from the council?
Uh, the only question I had is, it, it's real CPI, right? Not nominal? It doesn't dictate in the language?
It probably should.
I don't, I don't know how that's, the, this is just, I don't know if, if they put, do they put both of those out?
Yeah, that's why I figured it probably should be. And as the.
The city attorney helped craft that, right?
Yeah. But if you are looking for a change in that, um, we can ask him about that for, that's, that's a pretty mine.
It's minor, but it probably should be detailed.
So you can make an amendment, but you can do that on the second reading if that is an issue.
That's fine.
I think that he had based that, I think, off of how the state has some of their CPI language for changes, but I'll ask him about it.
There could be years where there's a, a significant difference between the two. Hasn't been a while, but could be.
Well, I will, I will, um, I will kind of echo some of Shane's thoughts when he, uh, first brought this up, because he, you know, he brought this up going out the door, so he wouldn't be voting for himself to raise him, or unfortunately, uh, he kind of left that for us, but that's, you're still, we're not voting for ourselves. It would be for the newly elected in 2021. Uh, it has been a, I asked Jim the other day, when was the last time that's been looked at, and it's been a while, so my concern is, is that, uh, council does take some time, and there are some very talented people that maybe are on an hourly basis that would have to give up time or vacation time to be able to serve, and we don't want to, we don't want to keep those people out of the ability to look for office because, because of a low pay, so it should, it should adjust, uh, from time to time. Uh, I know that's not why any of the council up here is doing this job, is for the check. I mean, why would you? It's, it's pretty, pretty low for the hours you spend, but I, I do think it needs to be done, although I'm a little bit reluctant about it, because I don't like to vote for more money for ourselves, but as long as it's not for us and doesn't take effect right away, I know we're voting for the future, future, uh, council members.
I agree, John. I, I think we didn't have as many people running for the two open seats as we had hoped this last time, and, and we wondered if maybe that was part of the, part of the problem, and I know everyone's extremely busy when the unemployment rate is, is so low. It's hard to find those live, live bodies out there, but just the optics doesn't look real good right now to me to vote for this when we're looking at probably budgetary shortfall. I just have a really hard time with that.
I would agree. I would rather see this come up after the budget process and see exactly where we are. I know it doesn't have anything to do with any of us up here. Um, being in education a long time, you don't do this job or any job for, for the cash. But I would, my personal opinion, and I agree with, I mean, it's been a long time since anybody's gotten a raise, um, for the city council, but I would really like to see us look at it after we have a budget and know what we're looking at.
Unfortunately, the window for that will be closed at that point, I believe, isn't it, Jim?
What do you mean?
Wasn't the window only open for like, uh, thirty days or something like that?
No, I mean, you can only, you, the only time you cannot vote on this is during the months of November and December.
Oh, okay. I thought you had indicated there was a shorter window.
In, in regards to the budget, uh, this is for, um, again, a year and a half out. This doesn't impact this next year's budget, so, uh, it's, it is an item that does have an impact on ongoing budgets, uh, by a, a few thousand dollars, but it is not the budget that will even be in, in discussions on this, uh, this budget season.
So, uh, to give the citizens of Burlington more of a chance to participate in, in the discussion, uh, I did see some stuff on social media. Uh, would it be possible to table this until later?
No.
Wouldn't move to table, move to postpone it, right?
You can, you can make a motion to continue it to a, but it has to be to a specific date.
Specific date.
And what are you, what are you waiting for?
Uh, I would like to give the, the public an opportunity to, uh, to make their voices heard. It's kind of been short notice. Um, if we brought it up in December and we're talking about it in January, and, um, unless, I guess, no one objects, um, kind of have a small audience tonight, and whatever, whatever folks is in, does have anything to say.
We can, we can vote on this as the first reading, so we have two more readings.
Yeah.
So we can, they'll, they'll have opportunity on the second and third reading to go, to go through it.
Okay. That's six more weeks.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, it, it'll have plenty of opportunity to be out there. So, I mean, it'll have plenty of opportunity to be out there. I know I've already had feedback from others, so I think for the most part, you're going to have plenty of opportunity for people to come down, provide feedback.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Can I get a motion to close?
Or it's not a close?
Call it's not a close, I'm sorry.
Just a first reading.
Oh, it's just first reading. My, my bad. New on the job, folks. Give me a break. Anyway.
May I make the comment?
Yeah.
Leon Shayhan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I'm going to surprise the heck out of you. Pay raise is long overdue. This schedule, I believe it's 500 a month for council members, 550 for the mayor. It's been like this for about 25 years. If you're doing your job, that's less than minimum wage. And we're, we're electing people to handle, all told, about $20 million in taxes, including road use tax and things like that. We need to have a little remuneration to, to get people to run for office.
Thank you, Leon. Any other comments from the audience? Then we will move on to resolutions.
Your honor, I have... We need to vote on that first reading.
Oh, on the first reading?
Yep.
Oh, so we don't close it? I'm sorry. I guess I thought I had that down.
Okay. Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Mopin?
No.
Rinker?
Aye.
Resolutions?
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the final plat of Westbrook Brook Meadows Third Edition subdivision.
Mr. Tisland?
I need a second.
Second.
This is a four-lot subdivision located east of Gear Avenue along Gearfield Drive. This is the condo townhouse development, north, just north of West Avenue. There's two lots remaining that they're splitting into two, two lots each. They've typically started construction and then done the subdivision prior to completion so that the center lot line, as shown between lots three and four and 18 and 19, will be exactly down the middle of the home. So this is a zero lot line development where each unit's on its own individual lot, but there's a shared common party wall, similar to this here, where each unit's on its own lot, but there, it is a combined unit. They do meet all the building code standards for this, and it is within our zoning code to allow the zero lot line development, but they want to make sure that line is down the center of the property, so that's why they, you'll see construction started out there, but the subdivision coming now to make sure that that center line is right down the center of the common wall. And this follows what has occurred before in the preliminary plat that was previously approved by planning commission and city council.
Any comments or concerns from the audience? Counsel? All right. Let's vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Mopin?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
All right. Are there any further comments from the audience? Mr. Shayan?
Leon Shayhan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. You folks will be doing the budget pretty soon, and probably one of the biggest things you're going to be looking at is the riverfront development. And before we get started on that, I think there's a lot of information out there that's just not being shared with people making the decision. I saw published that last year was the record rainfall that we'd ever had here. That's not true. In 1851, Iowa got 74 and a half inches. Last year, it was 50.73. So if you thought you had it bad last year with the flooding, it can be worse. It has happened. And probably the most important thing is, when you look at cost overruns, economic development incentives and whatnot, this project is $100 million. Your property tax revenues are 13 million, and I know you're talking about some grants and sales tax increment financing, but the way some of that works leaves taxpayers like me and my neighbors at risk for having to pick up the tab on the debt service if the sales tax increment doesn't come through. And when you're talking about river flooding, there's a basic math problem with what's happening. If you have a river crest in, what, like 2008, of 25.73 feet with flowing water two to three miles wide, trying to confine that between a levee, the Illinois, and a flood wall here, only three quarters of a mile wide, it's going to take a heck of a lot higher wall than 28 feet. And it's going to be pretty ugly if you build one high enough to restrain the water. One of the other problems you're dealing with, and I've tried to find the history on this, and I really haven't, Gulfport's on an island. The railroad raised their right-of-way there to avoid flooding, and apparently because, and we've talked about this before with some of the members, there's a lot of glacial silt there. Bedrock is 150 to 200 feet down. For whatever reason, the railroad blocked the channel on the east side of Gulfport. So you're really trying to squeeze a two-chamber river into one in front of Burlington. That's a big math problem. No matter what you do for a flood wall, it's going to overtop it. And I've heard rumors, I'm, I'm not sure how far advanced they are, that they're going to propose a hotel down there on some sort of stilts or whatever. That's an engineering debacle. Again, because the glacial silt in that river valley, bedrock's 200 feet deeper than what you see out there. That's a long ways to, to drive pilots, and I just don't think it's economically feasible. Another problem that's happened with the river, people attribute what we had last year in 2008 as climate change. No, it's not climate change. It's a man-made disaster, all right, but it's not climate change. When we put all the locks and dams on a river, you turn the Mississippi River into a series of ponds, ponds sealed in. Over the years, the riverbed keeps rising, keeps, keeps rising. You're just having levee wars with the state of Illinois and Iowa trying to keep up with it. You're not going to be able to do that in the long term. Another item that isn't talked about is where the Iowa River meets the Mississippi. That's a really unstable situation. Just downstream of that junction, there's a dam, so you've got a lot of siltation where the levee could breach north of town, and critical city infrastructure is at risk. All that water would be headed toward, toward our waterworks. And we haven't even talked about that. You know, as far as protecting valuable city property, what's more important to the residents of this town? The auditorium or making sure we have clean drinking water? And lastly, Mississippi River is a very unstable river. To keep this story short, over the eons, the Mississippi River has flowed west of Mount Pleasant in what's now the Skunk River, and what we know is the Illinois River from Princeton on south is also the Mississippi. And there's channels all over eastern Iowa, too many for me to, to enumerate right now. But you're trying to tame a monster. It's just not going to be possible. I'd rather see the money that you're devoting to the riverfront development to doing something about the sewer systems in this town. That's a critical need, and if we don't get that done, the fines alone are bankrupting.
Thank you, Leon. Anyone else?
Freddie Sterling, 517 South 7th Street, Burlington, Iowa. And I just want to say, I got here a little late, want to congratulate the new mayor and the mayor pro team. I'm here tonight to extend the invitation to the city council to come and love to have your support on the Dr. King celebration on January the 20th at 5:00 PM. The celebration will be right next to us here at the loft. I know you have a city council meeting that night, so...
No, we don't.
Not the 20th?
We changed it specifically for this.
So we could honor, so we could honor Dr. King.
Praise the Lord. Amen. Thank you. Amen. We've been kind of bumping heads for the last few years, but Dr. Alva Jones from Quincy, Illinois is one that's very, will sheer enlighten us and bless us on that night as he speaks to us concerning the vision of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Also, we will have gospel music, we will have some good food, and I think it would be a very, very enlightening and a blessed night. So may I be a part of it?
That'd be great.
Do we need RSVP for that or just show up?
Just show up.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll put this in everyone's mailbox, so we have it. Anybody else from the council or the audience with any comments? Staff, the, do the, the three wise men back there have anything? Four. I know. Don, I was going to get to Don. He sits in the corner. Don, no one else has anything? Mr. Tisland?
Well, you guys figure out which one of the wise men.
Reminder, Citizens Academy applications are now on our website. This is the third year that we've been doing this class. Takes you through various city departments to explain how they work for the citizens. Generally, try to limit the class to 12 so that we can have a good discussion and get through each session. They're from 5:30 to 7:30 on Thursday evenings, starting on February 20th. So encourage individuals to apply. Just go to our website, burlingtoniowa.org. It's on the main page there. And if you have any questions, you can contact Jessica Gerling in the Development Department.
Okay. Hey, Rhonda, you know, of course, I don't have to call you wise. You're already smarter than all of us, so that's why I didn't signal you out. Jim?
We have council training tomorrow at 3 o'clock.
Yes.
So be here. Be ready. We have our first budget meeting on Thursday at 3:30, and that will be the Police Department as well as a general overview of, of the, I think the general fund is what, what I do, although I can't remember. I haven't even put time into that yet. We try to set the budget meetings up to, ideally, what we're looking at is trying to spend about two hours a night when we're doing it. So if you think about the Police Department, that in general, that should be about an hour for that portion of the presentation. And as we move forward, that's kind of the framework that we've set up to try to keep from this becoming something that gets too long in any given evening. Radio, second Wednesday of the month is council's time for, for being on the radio at 9:00 in the morning. This is the second Wednesday of the month. Who is looking to be on that?
I can do it tomorrow.
Well, I was going to say let the, the two of you guys want to do it.
I'm at a superintendent's meeting.
Okay. We'll, we'll do it. Yep. We'll do it.
On Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday. I said tomorrow meant Wednesday.
Yep.
Okay.
It's usually what day?
Second Wednesday of the month. So, and if, to the extent that it can get rotated around, it's, it's great. Understand schedules don't always work for that, so. And did you, I'm sorry, did you talk about Citizens Academy?
Yep.
Left it out. So that's it. That's all I have.
Okay. Counsel, any comments?
If you have a chance to attend the Citizens Academy, I would sign up for that. I would, I would jump on that. It's an amazing experience, and you learn so much about Burlington that it, it, it's a, it's a great experience, so I would encourage anyone to go.
Jim, did you have something else?
The only thing, other thing I'd put is the ordinance for the change in language, that's CPI-U. The Bureau of Labor Statistics puts out the Consumer Price Index for all consumer, urban consumers, CPI-U, U.S. City Average by Exponenture Category. That for the Midwest region is the definitive number. That's the rate of inflation of, that's, that's what they're looking at. They, they're not looking at that in real or nominal terms. They're just looking at a basket of goods and the change from the base year, from one year to the next.
Okay.
On an annual basis.
Matt? Do you have anything?
Good.
Linda?
I just reiterate what Tisland and Robert said about Citizens Academy, and we have one of our graduates up here, and it's a great opportunity to learn the inner workings of your city. And I went through it last year, and I thoroughly enjoyed it, and I learned a lot. And if you're just thinking, wow, I've always wanted to learn how waterworks works, now's your chance.
And meet all the wise men.
Yeah. And meet all the wise men. Yeah. Anyway, I encourage it to consider signing up for Citizens Academy because you won't go wrong, and you really, really enjoy it.
It's really informative. I agree. Bill, do you have anything?
It is an absolute honor to be here and, and serve with the four other people up here and the city staff, and it's going to be a wonderful time, and I just want to thank the four of you.
Yeah, thanks.
I do want to jump back. Chief Kramer has, the Burlington Police Department is doing their Citizens Academy as well, and that has been coming up. I noticed an email from Officer Thompson, I think late last week, indicating that they were advertising for that. So not only does the city have their Citizens Academy going on, which is a very macro point of view of all of city functions, the Police Department has their Citizens Academy coming up, which I would highly recommend. I went through that last year. It's a great program, so. It is on Facebook, so if you, if you want to register for that, you can go on their Facebook page and do that.
Though, though the promotional materials, the city staff says, here in City Hall says that our promotional materials are better than the Police Department, so.
Sorry about that, chief. You want to rebuttal?
I can't turn.
Okay.
I will say the Police Department probably has cooler toys, so.
I don't know. Don's got a pretty exciting showdown there. I enjoyed that. You know, thanks for bearing with us through the first meeting. It was a little rough. Sorry about that. We will get better, at least on my end. And thank you very much to the council. I'm, I'm very honored and humbled at the same time, and, man, I'm really looking forward to this year serving with this council. So get your pencils out. We have budgets coming up and city training tomorrow.
Have fun banging that.
And we are adjourned. There you go.
Need a second.
Oh, second.
I'm second.
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 Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Phillips?
Yes.